Chairman Rossler, this is Pat Ciao. Good evening. We are at 6 o'clock right now, so we are ready when you are.
Very good. All right. I will call the May 19th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Executive Order N 2920. The public is restricted from attending the meeting in person due to the Public Health Order issued by the County of San Diego. Our public, the public may watch the livestream video of the meeting at www.cityofvista.com, and may participate via email at planningcomments@cityofvista.com, or by voicemail at 764-643-2816. The first item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Ciao, would you call the roll please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler?
Here.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Hastings?
Here.
Commissioner Grimm?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Aguilera? Student Commissioners Natali? And Student Commissioner Wolf? Let the record show that at the present time Commissioner Looney, Commissioner Aguilera are absent, and so both Student Commissioners are absent at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ciao. Commissioners, the meetings from, or the minutes from last night's meetings aren't ready yet and will be approved at our next meeting. Ms. Ciao, any changes to our agenda tonight?
No agenda changes. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. The next item on our agenda is oral communication. This is time that the commission sets aside for matters that are not on our agenda. Any correspondence received prior to 6:00 p.m. will be read into the record. Ms. Ciao, did we receive any correspondence?
We received no correspondence. Chairman Rossler? Thank you.
All right. Moving on then to our public hearing. The public hearing testimony can only be accepted via email or voicemail at the, at email@planningcomments@cityofvista.com, or voicemail at 764-286. We will first have a presentation by staff, then the applicants will make a presentation. We will have questions, at times the questions from the commission, and then I will open the public hearing and allow, we will allow it, public comments via email and voicemail. At this point, at this point, the city will take a 10-minute break. Following the break, staff will summarize or read all the public comments received. I will close, then close the public hearing. We will have the planning commission discussion and a vote. So that's what the call, the, somebody has an open mic, so it would be helpful if everybody could mute. And the item on our, our public hearing tonight is Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. Ms. Ciao, is you up for the staff report?
Yes, certainly, Chairman Rossler. And if I could ask the attendees, the participants on this call, if you could all please mute your phones if you're not speaking. I'm hearing actually feedback at this end on the speakerphone, and it's actually getting recorded, so if you would please mute your phones, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman Rossler, Planning Commissioners. My name is Pat Ciao. I'm the City Planner, Deputy Director in Community Development Department. I'm here this evening to present to you item PH1, which is P 18-0117. It's the Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. The particular project is a request for a special use permit, a site development plan, tentative subdivision map, and a comprehensive sign program for a retail commercial center on a 4.12 acre parcel of vacant land currently. There are a total of five lots that are being proposed as part of the project, and five separate buildings with one building on each of the proposed lots. The project is comprised of a self-service car wash, four dry-thru restaurants, retail spaces, and building sizes that range from about 4,000 square feet to about 6,000 square feet in size. There are a total of 160 total parking spaces, inclusive of nine handicap accessible spaces. Drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, as well as all associated infrastructure will be part of the project, along with associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. I'd like to point out that the project is also constructing a five-foot sidewalk, curb and gutter along the southern project frontage section that's along Hacienda Drive. Going on to the next slide, it's an aerial photo of the existing uses as well, obviously the subject property site at Hacienda Drive. The project site is actually zoned C1, and the general plan designation is GSE, which stands for General Commercial. So across the street on the south side, across Hacienda Drive, there are residential properties zoned E1, which is estate residential low density. There is also commercial property across Hacienda Drive where the Food for Less Shopping Center is located, and it is, to the north is SR 78, to the west immediately is Vista Village Drive, and across the freeway to the north is additional, the commercial centers. This slide shows a view of the project site, as seen from Hacienda Drive, just looking straight at the project site. And this is another view, aerial view showing the existing, the conditions as the vacant site, the houses, existing single-family homes to the south of Hacienda Drive, and the shopping center, Food for Less, across the street on Hacienda Drive, by, bound, bound by the freeway to the north. So the next slide shows a site plan of the proposed project. Again, comprised of five different lots proposed with one building on each lot. The lots ranging size from .66 of an acre to one acre in size. And what I wanted to indicate is where you can see the four dry-thru restaurants along with inline retail, that's proposed on pads 1 through 4, and then on pad 5 is the proposed car wash. I put the dimensions on this slide showing the, the dimension separation between the car wash and the existing single-family homes across the street on Hacienda Drive, and that dimension distance ranges from 100 feet to about 175 feet separation there.
Pat C?
Yes.
Let me ask everyone participating again to mute their phones. There is, there is a discussion going on in the background, and it's very hard to understand, Ms. Ciao. So again, check your phones and please mute. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that. Yes, I can still hear the, the sound of conversation, so yes, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Chairman Rossler. The, the general plan designation is a general commercial, which does allow for commercial uses that are servicing the residents and businesses at a regional and neighborhood scale, including community shopping centers and restaurants. And the project is also located in the OA 10, which is an opportunity area 10, known as the North County Regional Center, Breeze Hill Road Opportunity Area, which is identified in our land use and community identity element of the general plan. The zone for the site is C1, which allows for a variety of commercial retail uses, including restaurants, convenience markets, and other commercial type uses. The building height that's proposed, the maximum I should say that's allowed in the zone is 35 feet. The maximum proposed height for the project is 29 feet 9 inches, which is actually part of pad 2, a dry-thru and retail space. There are, the setback requirements are on Hacienda is 3 and 1/2 feet required where there's proposed 12 feet minimum, and Vista Village Drive is a 20-foot requirement where 48 feet is being provided. The parking spaces, total provided is 160 total spaces, where 136 are required spaces by our code, our parking code, and the landscaping requirement is 15 percent where we, the project is being proposed at 21.9 percent.
Is now in the conference.
Somebody may have just joined us right now. Continue on with my presentation.
That's, that's, we did.
I'm sorry?
Steven Cresto?
Oh, yes. Hi, Steve. The, the, this is Pat Ciao, by the way. I'm in the middle of my presentation here. Thank you. So on slide number 11, as I continue on here, it's a, a presentation on the stormwater BMP best management practices, and on this slide you can see that there are four basins that are actually treating stormwater runoff within the project site, and there are primarily three detention infiltration basins that are located in the northwestern, in the northern, central, and southeastern portion of the project site. There's also a fourth facility that's a biofiltration basin planter that's located on the southwestern portion of the site, and all of the onsite runoff, stormwater runoff, would actually be collected in a private storm drain system and then conveyed to one of these facilities that I just mentioned. As far as the landscape plan, there is a proposed landscaping of 21.9 percent of the site, which is exceeding the 15 percent requirement, as I previously stated, per our landscape manual. They are using native, some non-native plant materials, and that actually require low, moderate water use, drought tolerant species. And to the next slide here, I'm on slide number 13, is a simulated view of pad 3. The style of architecture is modern style with a mixture of textures and finishes. The proposed building materials would incorporate smooth stucco with brick veneer, faux wood siding, metal corrugated siding, and the use of dark bronze metal awnings over the windows and doors, which would not only serve functionally but also aesthetically. The color palette for the project, as somebody putting their phone on hold. Chairman Rossler, we're gonna pause this for a second because there's somebody putting their phone on hold for a second. Excuse us.
Yeah.
I can mute.
Welcome. Chairman Rossler, could we make another announcement to have people put their mics on mute if, you know, so we don't have to go through listening to somebody's phone call like before? I agree. It seems to have resolved itself, the whatever television program they were watching is not playing in the background, at least for me. So everyone puts your phone on mute until you need to speak.
Okay. This is Pat Ciao again. Chairman Rossler, I will restart the meeting if that's okay with my presentation on slide number 13, where we left off. So I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and start that right now. Okay.
Right. Is that okay with Commissioner Looney and Commissioner Aguilar?
Yes, that would be fine.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Okay. Very good.
Okey dokey. So I will proceed. I was on slide number 13, so I'll start that off again. So on slide number 13 is a view of the simulated view pad 3. As I was mentioning, the style of architecture is a modern style with a mixture of textures and finishes. The proposed building materials would incorporate stucco, smooth stucco and brick veneer, there's faux wood siding, metal corrugated siding, the use of dark bronze metal awnings over the windows and doors, which would not only serve functionally but as well as aesthetically. The color palette would be beige, gray, tan, silver, black and red accent colors, and the overall color palette for the project would actually be mixed with other proprietary colors for selected tenant, for the selected tenants. The exterior finishes would also have some anti-graffiti coating on them, and other features of the project as far as design is concerned is the use of sun umbrella, charcoal metal, and cloth awnings, as well as planter trellises throughout the project. Onto the next slide, number 14, is a simulated view of pad 1. The next slide is a simulated view of pad 2. The next one is a simulated view of pad number 4. And finally, a simulated view of pad number 5 where the car wash facility is located at. So two views of it as far as the entrance to the car wash and where the vacuum stations are located at. The next slide is a view of the project site, looking west, so the project site in its entirety. Next, next slide is slide number 19, which is the pad 1 and floor plan and elevations. The next slide shows pad 2, floor plan with the particular elevations on all sides proposed. Continuing on with pad 3, floor plan elevations, as shown on the slide. Pad 4, floor plan elevations, which is similar or mimicking the other architectural elevations in terms of materials. And finally, pad 5, the floor plan elevations for the proposed car wash, and I put a little inset of the trash enclosure detail there. And there's also a comprehensive sign program that's coming along with the project, showing the different types of wall signs, dry-thru signs, as well as projecting blade and under canopy signs. There are a total of proposed five monument signs, along with a pylon sign along the freeway. So it's a 30-foot tall pylon sign, and as well as the six-foot maximum tall monument signs as shown on this particular slide for each of the five pads. So, okay, so in terms of environmental review, the environmental impact report, EIR, was prepared for this project in accordance with CEQA. The EIR identified significant impacts associated with approving the proposed project, and approving the project with significant impacts means that it requires findings to be made by the lead agency in accordance with CEQA. So what happens is that the state CEQA guidelines requires findings to be associated with the significant impacts of a project that will either have mitigated to a less than significant level pursuant to mitigation measures that are identified in the EIR, or mitigation measures notwithstanding that have a residual significant impact, then that would require a statement of overriding considerations. So what I wanted to highlight on this slide is the, the three areas that were considered to be significant, starting with the cultural resources and tribal cultural resources, as well as traffic. They were both found to be potentially significant, but the proposed mitigation measures would actually, associated with each of them would actually result in a less than significant impact. The, on the other hand, you have greenhouse gas emissions that were found to be significant and continue to be significant despite the implementation of feasible mitigation measures. So the draft EIR was first circulated for public review back in October of 2019 through November of 18, 2019. The city at that time received a total of 13 comment letters during the public review period, and all of the comments received, all the staff responses, they are attached in the final EIR, which is exhibit C to exhibit 1 in the staff report. Subsequent to closing of the public review period, the applicant Sun Road Vista Partner, Land Partners determined that there were actually specific mitigation measures that were recommended in the previously circulated draft EIR that would actually be feasible to implement, and all of that discussion is included in the greenhouse gas emissions chapter or section 3.2 of the recirculated draft EIR. So at that point, there was a need to have a recirculation of the draft EIR, which was then available for another 45-day public review period from March 12 to April 27 of 2020. So the partial recirculated draft EIR identified potentially significant impacts for, specifically for greenhouse gas emissions. The city then received a total of three comment letters during the public review period. All of the comments and all of the staff responses are included in exhibit C to exhibit 1 in the final EIR in the staff report. Along with that, findings and statement of overriding considerations and proposed mitigation monitoring reporting program were also prepared for the project and also included as exhibits in the staff report. So going back to cultural resources and tribal cultural resources, project construction, any ground disturbing activities may actually uncover cultural resources, and that could be potentially damaging as far as potentially destroying or potentially damaging, therefore resulting in a significant impact related to cultural resources and tribal cultural resources. Because of that, there are specific, the implementation of mitigation measures that would come into play, and therefore reducing these impacts below or to a level that would be less than significant level. The types of mitigation measures that would be considered at this point or a part of the EIR is related to construction monitoring, having a pre-excavation agreement, monitoring report, evaluation of construction monitoring reports, determining most likely descendant if their cultural materials related to, to be, that need to be repatriated or recovered, cultural material, et cetera, or discovery of human remains, which then it would necessitate no further disturbance at the site until there's necessary findings made by the county coroner. So with these particular mitigation measures in place, then the impact would be reduced to a less than significant level. As far as traffic, there was a traffic study that was prepared in 2019. There were specific trip generation rates that were developed using San Diego's guide to vehicular traffic generation rates for the San Diego region. And based on these San Diego's trip generation rates, the project is estimated in generating a total of 10,054 average daily trips. And that would result in a significant impact at intersection number 3, which is identified as South Melrose, Hacienda Drive, where there's an increase of more than the two allowable, two seconds of delay that would occur resulting from this potentially significant impact. However, because of traffic mitigation measures and putting them into play, the impacts would then be reduced to a less than significant level. So the first mitigation measure talks about having a signal interconnect on Hacienda Drive between South Melrose Drive and Hacienda Drive intersection, and the Vista Village Drive, Hacienda Drive intersection. And what that means is that you're pulling fiber optics from South Melrose Drive, Hacienda Drive intersection, towards Vista Village Drive, Hacienda Drive intersection, so that they are part of the traffics, the city's traffic signal communication network at that point. That's what the interconnection means. And the second mitigation measure, there'll be a third westbound left turn lane in the striping, as shown on figure 3.3-1, and I have an actual slide that shows what that is meant, an actual graphic showing that, in upcoming slide. And then the third mitigation measure will be constructing an exclusive westbound right turn lane on Hacienda Drive along the project frontage at Vista Village via widening of Hacienda Drive along the project frontage. So this is the graphic that I was talking about in terms of the third westbound left turn lane on Hacienda Drive and heading south on South Melrose. So basically, you see the 10-foot wide left turn lane, and there's some additional modifications that need to be done to the existing medium there in order to provide the, the appropriate improvements, in order to accommodate the additional left turn lane at this location. The next slide shows the project constructing the exclusive westbound right turn lane on Hacienda Drive along the project frontage at Vista Village Drive via widening of Hacienda Drive along the project frontage. So instead of sharing a through traffic with a right turn lane, now you each have a designated right turn lane, and the through traffic would have its own lane, this particular intersection as shown on this slide. So moving on to greenhouse gas emissions. Back in 2006, California Legislature adopted what's AB, known as AB 32. That's the Global, California Global Warming Solutions Act, and that basically reduce, or focuses on the reduction of GHG emissions in California. The city in 2016 developed and what's called the interim guidance for evaluating GHG emissions from individual development projects within the city, subject to CEQA. And the purpose of the, this particular interim policy on greenhouse gas emissions is basically to provide guidance as far as a consistent and objective evaluation of significant climate change impacts in compliance with AB 32, until such time when the cap is, that's being updated, is updated, adopted to include such evaluation criteria. So this is the, the role of the interim policy in the meantime. And in that interim guidance policy, there's a numerical, what's called the bright line threshold, and basically that's based on a review of projects within, within City of Vista, and identifying the threshold being 1185 or 1,185 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, which is basically a standard unit of measurement for carbon footprints. That particular number, 1185 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, would basically capture about 90 percent of the city's GHG emissions that are attributable to development projects. So with that number in mind, the total project GHG emissions in the first fully operational year must be less than that bright line threshold of 1185, and if it falls below the threshold, then the project would not generate GHG emissions either directly or indirectly that would cause a significant impact on the environment. What happens with the project is that the total CO2 emissions from the project would actually be approximately 2517 or 2,517 metric tons of CO2, and that being a number higher than 1185, would that means that we would have to be, the project would have to be subject to what's called the city's efficiency threshold, which is 3.3 metric tons CO2 per year, per service population, in order to find out whether there is a significant GHG impact here. So an assumption has to be made as far as what is the service population for the project, and the service population is 107 total employees, and that means that the per service population efficiency would be at this point 23.5 metric tons of CO2 per year, and that's greater than 3.3. So therefore, the project would exceed the significance criteria, and therefore would result in a significant GHG impact. So with mitigation measures for greenhouse gas emissions, there are four particular mitigation measures that would actually help reduce the project's GHG emissions to the extent that's feasible, but again, would not reduce it to a level that's below significance. So the project emissions would continue to be significant and in fact unavoidable. The four mitigation measures identified in the EIR for GHGs using energy-reducing features that are all listed in the findings of the EIR on page 13. There's conservation of water, solid waste reduction, recycle- There's conservation of water, solid waste reduction, recycling mechanisms, promotion of electric and alternative fuel vehicles. If you were to implement all the above measures, that would result in a CO2 emissions reduction of 66 metric tons of CO2 per year. But even with the mitigation, the operational emissions for the project would still stand at 2,451 metric tons, which is still above the 1185 bright line threshold. So, with that in mind, what happens that the city then must find that the benefits of the project that's being proposed actually outweigh the project's significance in terms of the adverse environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated to a less than significant level. The benefits that are included in the EIR include the, related to the project include the following, and that's for consideration by the planning commission tonight. So, the first benefit identified is that it would provide additional employment opportunities in the city. It would provide additional tax revenue in the city, to the city, improve an underused site, shield the existing residences from the noise on SR 78, promote smart growth concepts in a regionally oriented commercial development along SR 78 corridor, and also would improve the existing roadway conditions. I wanted to touch on noise as, even though it is an impact that's considered to be less than significant, I know there are probably questions that are going to be asked about related to the car wash and other operational noise sources on the site, related to the automatic car wash, the outdoor vacuums, the drive-through speakers, and the rooftop each vacuum units. So, there was modeling done in the noise study that was prepared by the consultant for the project's operation, including, included the combined noise levels from these sources that I just mentioned. And the modeling shows that there would be an outcome of 50 decibels average noise contours which would not extend into the nearby properties. The car wash blower would actually generate noise levels that are beyond the project site, however, they would not be expected to exceed 50 decibels at the nearby residences. In terms of our commercial zone requirements, noise requirements, allowances from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., your, one is allowed 60 decibels, and 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. would be a maximum of 55 decibels. There is an existing six-foot concrete mancery unit wall that would reduce noise levels at the residences that are located just to the south of the project site across Hacienda Drive. The car wash would not be operating at nighttime, it's, it's conditioned, so it would be, the timeframe would be 7:00 to 9:00, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the noise levels that are exceeding 55 decibels, they are not expected to, across Hacienda Drive. So, because these nearby residential uses would not be subject to noise levels from the project operations that exceed either daytime or nighttime limits, then the impacts related to noise would be less than significant. I put a graphic here because it does speak a thousand words as far as what I just said on the previous slide, but it does show in, basically on the light yellow color, the 50 decibels there approaching the existing concrete mancery wall that's across the street on the south side of Hacienda Drive, and then it kind of, it's basically outside of the project limits, but going on to Hacienda Drive there towards the other single-family home, but it is not basically crossing the property lines as you can see from this particular slide and the particular decibels.
Excuse me, Ms. Chow, I don't see a graphic.
Um, it's probably coming up, oh, I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garrettson, this is on the website, the live stream, I had to add this slide, and this was actually subsequent to submitting the PowerPoint to you guys last Thursday, so I'm sorry about that. But it is a graphic, you might be able to go livestream perhaps and actually see the graphic on livestream. The particular, the next slide on the public policy consideration is the general plan in terms of the general plan, development code, and the design guidelines conformance. And the proposed project is consistent with the development code, design guidelines, and the general plan designation for the site as far as general commercial. The land use designation does support commercial uses, serving residents, businesses at a regional level, as well as, as far as also being located along a major travel route and a key intersections. So, therefore, the commercial center is concerned, is consistent with the general plan, and would also improve an undeveloped site along, located on a major thoroughfare. The C1 zone allows for commercial retail as stated previously, as well as restaurant uses, and the proposed drive-through restaurants and the car wash, they would require approval of a special use permit. So, if the planning commission approves the applicant's request for a special use permit inclusive of the site volume plan, then the retail center would actually be consistent with the uses that are permitted in the C1 zone. With that, there are two recommendations from staff to the planning commission, one is pertaining to the final environmental impact report and the adoption of the findings and the statement of overriding considerations and the MMRP, the mitigation monitoring reporting program according to CEQA. And the second resolution is the granting of the special use permit inclusive of the site volume plan, the tenant's subdivision map, and the sign program for Sun Road Plaza at 460 Hacienda Drive. This concludes my presentation. The applicant does have their own presentation that they'd like to go into, so at this time, I'd like to ask Chairman Rossler if it's okay to move forward with the applicant's presentation, and if you want to hold the questions after, until after the applicant's presented, or would you like me to answer questions at this time?
Let's go ahead and move ahead with the applicant's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. So, at this time, I'd like to call Lisa Gordon representing Sun Road, and I have your presentation up, Lisa, and the slide number 40, which is the cover sheet of your slide presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. Good evening, Chairman Rossler and Commissioners, my name is Lisa Gordon, I represent the applicant, Sun Road Vista Land Partners. And I want to thank staff for their presentation and the thoroughness of it, and state our support for their recommendation to the planning commission this evening. I am, I want to apologize for some of the folks that came into the meeting a little bit late. We had trouble as a group getting on to the call, I think there was just probably too many of us, but we were able to do a three-way and patch some of those folks in. So, I think everyone from our team is on the call at this point. I'm going to be kind of blindly telling Patsy when to, when to switch the slides, so we'll try to get, make this as seamless as possible. So, first slide, Patsy, we can go ahead and change.
Yes, I'm on the slide where you have the landscape plan.
Okay, great. So, this is just a nice little exhibit showing the pads and the overall site plan. So, we can go to the next slide. Patsy did a great job, a lot of this is just reiterating what she already said to you, but I just want to point out that this project is consistent with the general plan use, general Next slide shows that it's also consistent with the previous general plan. So, this has been in the general plan for quite some time, since 1988 at least, designated as general commercial. Next slide shows that we are also consistent with the zoning ordinance, this is commercial, C1. So, not only do we comply with the general plan and the zoning ordinance, the next slide is just kind of going through all of the goals and objectives and policies that we comply with, with this proposed project in front of you tonight. Policy 6.3, developing a commercial center in the North County Regional Center. Policy 7.2 promotes regionally oriented commercial development along State Route 78. Policy AO 10.2, OA, excuse me, OA 10.2, is, demonstrates, demonstrates the improved walkability in the area through enhanced pedestrian amenities. And then Goal 7 shows us how we're providing commercial development near residential uses, and that too is in compliance with the general plan. So, just touching on the next slide, which is the opportunity area 10, just want to point out that the OA 10 identifies land uses that are intended to promote redevelopment or improvement to existing developed and natural areas, and encourages property revitalization and enhances community character. This would replace a vacant parcel and all of those things for us. Next slide, just want to go through some of the regulatory things that the project complies with. Complies with the city's design guidelines for commercial property. As Patsy pointed out, it meets the noise regulations for the city, and it meets all the development regulations, setbacks, building heights, lack coverage, parking, landscaping. So, you've got a very compliant project in front of you tonight. Next slide talks a little bit about the work that we've done with the community, I mean, this is going to be a community-serving center. We wanted to reach out to the community and make sure that we were hearing them, listening to them, and we collectively did several things. We did a knock and talk, which is kind of a community canvas, that occurred prior to COVID-19, of course, but we were able to walk the neighborhood about a quarter-mile radius south of 78 and talk to several folks about the project. We did emails and phone calls to area schools and PTAs and churches and business organizations, and we did our best to meet with stakeholder groups. Of course, COVID-19 changed the format a little bit, but we were able to do a Zoom meeting with South Vista communities, and we were able to do a Zoom meeting with the Vista Chamber of Commerce. And the slide shows a couple of flyers that we had prepared for the community. Next slide shows our economic and social benefits. We've got annual tax revenues that will be generated from this project, about $156,000 yearly, that comes from sales tax, and it also comes from property taxes. So, you'll see on this slide that we actually have a 58% increase from the current property tax when this property is developed. And Patsy had mentioned that we have about 107 total employees. We actually create 62 new permanent full-time equivalent jobs. So, this is high-quality development, high-quality dining, options for our residents, and it gives us an employment base as well. Next slide just talks a little bit about the new tax revenue, and you guys all know all of this, but this supports the city's economic development strategies by providing the commercial development, it tracks quality businesses, it provides new revenue for infrastructure and maintaining and repairing streets and sidewalks, and of course, it goes into new revenue to beautify the city's medians and landscaping. Next slide, in addition to the city benefits, it provides community benefits. The location of the project between the existing residents and SR 78 actually shields existing residences from the noise on SR 78, providing a land buffer and a visual line of sight buffer, providing community-serving uses, restaurant, retail, car wash. It improves walkability by providing new sidewalks and street trees, lighting, and of course, it's also providing traffic improvements to Hacienda Drive at two intersections, which Patsy went over. The next slide, this is a little different graphic, but it really depicts what Patsy already talked about. We are going to do a traffic interconnect between the two signals, Vista Village Drive and Melrose, that'll allow those signals to talk to one another. And there's one other improvement that we did that was actually above and beyond what the traffic study required that we do. We did some improvements to the east entrance of the center with two driveway entrances, the east driveway entrance. There was some concern that traffic would be coming out of there, making a left, and going through the residential community. And we worked with the city traffic engineer and our traffic engineer to design an entrance that would manage those turns, prevent and discourage turns from making left out of the driveway, and so it, it actually causes the cars to have to make a right there. We have what we call a pork chop, which is a little median, looks like a pork chop, and then another median that's actually in Hacienda. So, these things will help regulate the traffic. And the next slide just talks about smart growth. We want to comply with the smart growth concept that the city abides by. We want a direct development toward existing communities and existing infrastructure, this project does that. It directs commercial and retail development to be located within close proximity of housing, this is, promotes walkability, it does promote walkability, it promotes and provides commercial opportunities within walking distance, less than a half a mile of the North County Regional Center. And lastly, it promotes regionally oriented commercial development along State Route So, with that, again, I just want to thank staff for all the efforts that they've put into this project to make it a good project, to make it a great project, and just reiterate that we would like to support staff and ask for your approval tonight and making the findings for the special use permit. We also have here tonight, one of our principals with Sun Road, Mr. Dan Feldman, and he wanted to just make a statement here.
Hi, Patsy, is it okay if I say something?
Uh, it's for the Chair, Chairman Rossler.
You go ahead.
Hi, thank you, it's Dan Feldman, as Lisa said, I am one of the owners and a principal here at Sun Road. I don't know if it is communicated or not, but Sun Road is a local San Diego-based company. We're a private company, we've been in San Diego since 1977. We have various different businesses in and around San Diego, car dealerships, office buildings, golf courses, marina, restaurants. We've developed all throughout the city of San Diego and different cities throughout San Diego, so we're very knowledgeable about the development process. It's very important for us to be in conformance with code and all of the applicable requirements and rules and regulations. For your information, we've been processing this for over three years. We've been working very closely with staff, and Patsy and John have been very helpful in helping, in making sure that we complied with all of the specific technical studies as well as all of the rules and regulations as I mentioned, so I do want to thank city staff for that. And finally, I just want to reiterate that we're, as a, as a San Diego-based company, it's very important for us to be local and to have a local presence, and we want to thank the city, and we reiterate what Lisa said, that we want to thank the city staff for their support and ask for your approval today.
Any other comments or presentations from staff or the applicant?
Chairman Rossler, I think that concludes the applicant's presentation, and I, it would be, excuse me, going on to questions from the Commission.
All right, Commissioners, we're going to open it up to questions of staff and/or the applicant. Commissioner Kramer, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do, I have one question. Ms. Chow, did you say that the operational hours for the car wash was 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
That's correct, Commissioner Kramer.
Were there any of the local residents nearby, did they have any concerns about the hours or the noise that the, that the car wash would be generating?
I think there are several letters or comments that I forwarded to the Commission, comments from nearby residents concerned about just car wash, the addition of another car wash in this particular project, related to other car washes in town. I don't recall at the top of my head, but I've, there were several comments coming, I'm not particularly, I'm not sure about the hours, if they were concerned about that so much.
Okay, so I looked up on, this afternoon on the internet for the car wash, Vista Way or Williamson, and their hours of operation according to the website is 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then I looked, and there's housing in that area, and then I looked at the one car wash Vista Way near Emerald, and that car wash is 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they back up to an apartment building. And that car wash is 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they back up to an apartment building. So my only concern would be, and I didn't see anything where people were complaining about the hours, but nine o'clock to me seems a little bit late for a car wash. And that would be the only thing that I would say is can we at least take that back to eight? Other than that, I have no other questions at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Hastings, questions for the applicant or staff?
Yes, I have several questions. One of them was kind of answered. I am concerned about the traffic issues around the east end of the project. I did notice that the comments from the local residents discuss the fact that Madigual is kind of out there vulnerable to increased traffic in that intersection. And there's no discussion of any particular improvement or controls on the Hacienda-Madigual
Chairman Rosler, would you like me to answer that or listen to all the comments that Commissioner Hastings has?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So essentially, there is a driveway. The concern is, if I heard it correctly, Commissioner Hastings from the residents is the traffic going towards Vale View or towards the residential neighborhood. And we can certainly bring the traffic engineer, the consultant online, as far as their particular analysis. But as right now, as I indicated in my presentation, as far as traffic impacts or associated with the project, it is really, the concentration was really about the impact on intersection number three, which is the South Melrose, the Hacienda, and related to South Melrose Drive and Hacienda Vista Village Drive, and making sure that the proper improvements are done in order to ameliorate or mitigate the particular impact. There is that driveway at the eastern end, nonetheless, that I think caused some concern about folks saying that if the folks are coming out of that driveway, be perhaps going through their neighborhood towards east. And I think right now, the way it is proposed, or the way it is proposed anyways, as mentioned by Ms. Gordon as well, was the fact that there is a design of what we call the pork chop there at that driveway entrance to help, you know, basically create the, to lessen the opportunities, obviously, to make a left turn out of that driveway towards the neighborhood on Vale View. So it's basically forcing people to make a right turn at that particular eastern driveway towards Hacienda, towards the western end. So that was a design, definitely a design solution to try to address that concern in directing traffic to go back towards the west, towards Vista Village Drive, instead of going towards the neighborhood on Vale View.
And I appreciate hearing that. I was encouraged by that new solution on the eastern entrance to the project because with the pork chop, I think she called it.
Right, correct.
But I am, that doesn't address any concerns about Madigual, which were also brought up by the residents. And speaking of that, if this is going to be add to walkability, is there some, that's a, that Madigual-Hacienda intersection is a place, I'm looking at the Google map right now, where there needs to be some kind of crosswalks or traffic control there so that the residents can cross over to those services?
There is a proposed, I know the sidewalk improvements on the north side as, well, the existing sidewalk, there's an existing sidewalk on the south side of Hacienda Drive. And on the north side of Hacienda Drive, there's going to be a sidewalk along the whole entire project frontage with a curb ramp, in fact, at the corner there where you're speaking of, Hacienda and Madigual. So that will be with a stop sign so that people can cross, obviously safely, Hacienda Drive to get to the other side where the shopping center is located at. There is also a barricade on Madigual at that terminus. So I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to in terms of that particular intersection so folks cannot drive towards, down towards Madigual from that point.
Oh, they can't, oh, I see a little thing there.
Yeah, there's a barricade right there. So that was from a long time ago, and it's still there, the barricade. So there's no traffic that can go through that street. It's really the concern about the traffic heading east towards Vale View.
Right. And you say there's a crosswalk there, and did I hear you say a stop sign?
It's a stop sign, yes. It's a, there's no signal there, of course, but there's a stop sign and then, you know, people would be able to cross, get to the other side where the center is. There's a curb ramp there, meeting 88 requirements, and full improvements of curb, gutter sidewalk, and lighting.
Okay, I'm, I have to say that I think it's too many drive-throughs in that one area. And that's my bottom-line comment on that one. Obviously, there's no, the applicants are interested in remaining with this particular solution for the property. So I'm just registering my concern with too many drive-throughs.
Understand.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Grimm?
Yes, I have the same question that Commissioner Kramer did on the time. I thought nine o'clock was, you know, an hour or two, you know, too long. And my other question is just on the statement of overriding consideration. I assume that any large project now, it's probably going to have to be done. I just kind of had a question about how often or how many times in the past, recent past, last couple of years have we issued them? Maybe staff could remember, you know, roughly how many we've issued.
From my, Commissioner Grimm, this is Patsy Chow again. From my recollection, I have not in the last couple of years as far as a statement of overriding considerations. I don't recall off the top of my memory here, but as the years go by, my memory does tend to get less. But nonetheless, I don't recall one at this time.
Okay, great.
Patsy?
Yes, go ahead.
This is John Hamilton, the environmental planner for the city.
Yes, hi, John.
We did have overriding considerations for the general plan, EIR.
There you go.
Right. And I think that was the last time, that was back in 2012.
2012.
But I don't think there was any other, I don't think there was any overriding considerations on the EIR for the downtown Vista-specific plan. We don't have a lot of EIRs, actually, but that was the last overriding considerations for the general plan. Program EIR was the last one that I remember.
In 2012, that's.
Great. Thank you for that information.
Yep, thank you, John. Thanks for clarifying that. And then just to echo on what John said, that being the 2012, not related to a particular development project, but well said. Any other questions, Commissioner Grimm?
I'm sorry, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, I have, I have four questions. First of all, my understanding from what I heard tonight, that there's going to be coordination between the red lights on Hacienda and Vista Village Drive. And my question is, is that the, in the off-ramp, because without coordination there, you're, between the entrance to Hacienda, which is going to back up their traffic. Gary?
Commissioner Garrettson? Oh, yes. I was just going to mention the, I could not hear, I could hear every other word.
Right. Summarize quick. Gary, your question?
All right. All right, question is, we're going to coordinate the stoplights at Melrose and Hacienda, Vista Village Drive and Hacienda. If we don't coordinate also with the stoplights at the off-ramp of 78 in Vista Village or the on-ramp to 78 East, I think we're going to create a backup there that's going to make the other two mute.
So this is Patsy Chow again.
Somebody tell me why, why we, why that's not going to happen?
Based on the traffic study and working with our city's traffic engineer, the particular intersection that you mentioned, Commissioner Garrettson, both South Melrose and Hacienda and Hacienda Vista Village Drive are the ones that were the particular, particular intersections that were identified as needing to be addressed, and particularly with South Melrose Drive and Hacienda. I did not hear from or read from the traffic analysis as far as the on-ramps to the 78 on Vista Village Drive, whether those needed to be addressed. But we certainly can't call on Lisa Gordon to call on the traffic engineer from LLG to expand on that and whether there was any issues with those or how they were addressed or whether there was a point of concern at that point. So if we like, if you'd like, we can do that, certainly.
Absolutely. Because any time I turn right on Hacienda in order to turn left on Vista Village, in order to turn right on 78 East, there's a tie-up all the way over to Melrose sometimes.
Okay, so.
So unless that light there at 78 is with the other two, I think it's just backup is even worse than it is now.
It may, I may be jumping here, a leap of faith here. It may be that those particular intersections are already part of the city's network of traffic signal communication, but I'm making this big assumption. So instead of doing that, I'd like to call Lisa Gordon, please, and if John Borman or from LLG is on the line, if they could jump in and help clarify the question from Commissioner Garrettson, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Patsy. We do have John Borman from Lynn Scott Lawn Greenspan on the line, and I will turn it over to him.
Hi, yes, this is John Borman. And we had extensive conversations with Sam, your city traffic engineer. I'll say a couple of things. One is, he was very clear on which coordination signals he wanted to have this project do. The main issue with coordinating, there is coordination already on Vista Village between Hacienda and the freeway to the extent possible. It might not feel like it when you're driving it, but Caltrans controls that. So you can't do any more coordination without Caltrans approval. And frankly, they're kind of on their own system. So I think Sam knows that. So the first thing I'd say again is that Sam was directly involved in working with me on coming up with what's the best for the city in terms of coordination. I do think there is, I know there is some coordination already on Vista Village itself, but again, Caltrans controls that. So that's how we ended up with what we ended up with in the traffic study.
So you're saying that even though that's going to create a bottleneck there, Caltrans won't cooperate? Or has it been done to see if necessary?
I have not personally talked to the city. I think, talked to Caltrans, I think Sam has. I would say it's as coordinated as best they can. Those are, they're closely spaced. And Caltrans does everything they can, just looking out for themselves as far as the on-ramps and off-ramps and not backing up onto 78. So they, I think Sam's done the best he can in terms of that coordination already.
All right, that's a major concern that's unanswered at this point. My second question, if you look at the distance between Village Drive and the westernmost exit from this development, it looks like ten cars would tie up all of Hacienda. So if there are 15 cars, straight on Hacienda and distance only four left, that that would hook Hacienda. So it would seem to me that that's a major problem. You have roughly 70 cars can go through the drive-through, it takes much every half a minute or minute. So the question is, is a problem that the traffic, all of those cars going through the exiting, you know, every, in tying up Hacienda to where the people trying to get through Hacienda will be tied up there between the exit and Vista Village Drive?
Now, there was a full analysis of the Hacienda-Vista Village intersection. And what we're recommending is a dedicated right-turn lane on Hacienda approaching Vista Village. And there was synchro traffic computer analyses done at that intersection under Sam's supervision. And what it shows is, is that with the right-turn lane and with the extra traffic from the project, the delays at the intersection will be less than what they are today. So the mitigation is, does more to take off delay at that intersection compared to what the project adds.
Okay, all right. Third question, overriding conditions. You talk about adding jobs, but aren't you basically transferring jobs? If you're transferring two businesses from other sections of the town, you aren't creating jobs, you are transferring jobs and creating vacant space someplace else. So I don't know if that is an overriding condition.
Commissioner Garrettson, this is Patsy Chow again, city planner. The overriding considerations for consideration by the commission tonight, that's placed in the EIR or that's part of the EIR, it's basically looking at the project and the benefits that come with the project, and particularly with the subject matter. So we're not looking at the potentials of what the externalities that might result as a result of the project is, as far as what you were indicating in terms of employment or losses somewhere else. So we're focusing the benefits as far as the signature of overriding considerations in relationship to what the project on its own brings to the site in terms of the employment and what's stated in terms of revenues, tax revenues, sales tax, et cetera. I think I understand what you're mentioning is, but is the focus is what, on the benefits are associated with the project as it stands.
See, the benefits, when you're transferring, and the third one is creating a car wash, totally not in the city. Have one a block away in several different directions. So that causes me concern. My fourth and final question relates to the sound measurement at the car wash. It's my understanding in looking at the EIR that the dryers produce about 90 DDA. Is there a sound engineer on here?
Yes, I believe Lisa Gordon, Lisa, I believe you might have Joanne Dramco from Helix who prepared the noise study for the project.
Thank you, Patsy, yes. This is Lisa, and we do have our noise expert on the line from Helix Environmental. Her name is Joanne Dramco. Joanne, I'll turn this one over to you.
Sure. Can you hear me? I think I took myself out of you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, this is Joanne Dramco. Thank you, Commissioners. So we did, we used the specifications for the blowers from the applicant, and they were rated, they're found in our appendix, at about 75 DDA at 100 feet. So we modeled those using our Catlin noise model based on the topography of the site, the location of the car wash itself, the blowers themselves that would be inside the building, and the directionality of the sound emanating from that equipment. And as Patsy showed in her graphic, we actually combined the blower noise with the vacuum noise emanating from the vacuum cleaners and came up with a combined noise contours for the project. And as you can see, they do not result in any inconsistency with the city's noise ordinance effect, they would be below it.
Noise level do, it produces. It's my understanding, hard, that it produced ninety DDA. Gary, you break the ninety?
Yeah, sorry, I'm only hearing part of that question.
And looking at...
So noise levels are rated at different distances? Yeah. So it's seventy-five at about a hundred feet, but then you can't just take that as rote. There are other factors that go into how sound is emanated based on the sound wave. And also the placement of the equipment and also how sound travels and how often, the duration of the equipment, how often it will be run in a given hour as well. So all of those factors combined were taken into our noise model.
But what about the noise level at the source? Isn't that at a dangerous level?
So you can see how it emanates from the, you know, it's emanating from the equipment itself, but then it decreases as you go, as you emanate out. I'm not sure I'm getting what your question is exactly.
There are people that are vacuuming. There are people that are standing, people that are outside. And if these vacuum cleaners are producing ninety DDA, they're producing ninety DDA that could be harmful to the people that are using them.
Correct. However, each person that's there on the site is only there for a limited amount of time. So you're not having one person there all day long. A person who's driving through the car wash, they're leaving. Maybe they're there for a minute or two. Someone's operating their vacuum cleaner, they're there for a couple of minutes, and then they're leaving. So it's not resulting in a cumulative noise exposure that will be extended beyond a few minutes in any given hour.
Does ninety DDA have a potential hearing problem?
Not at the level of exposure that would be anticipated for the project. And these are, we base our noise levels based on other similar noise readings at other similar facilities.
All right. Let me ask the question again. If it produces ninety DDA and the people that are gonna be using the equipment is gonna be exposed for two minutes, does that exposure for two minutes create a potential health hazard to those people?
No, not for that duration. You can have concerts, people attending rock concerts that are much higher noise levels than that, that they're there for several hours. So ninety decibels at a few minutes is not going to result in any permanent damage.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Is that, is that it, Commissioner Garretson?
That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Looney?
That's it. Yes, I do have just a few questions for staff. And just a couple of things for Commissioner Garretson. Gary, on the, you had asked a question about the traffic between the outlet of the center, the Vista Village, and the backup space. That's approximately three hundred feet from the exit to the intersection. And so each, if we were looking just at that right-turn lane, that three hundred feet can accommodate a minimum of fifteen full-size cars. So if there's two lanes, then we're looking at double that. And that is also a similar distance. If we exit the Costco parking lot, go westbound to Emerald, that's about the same distance. It's about three hundred feet, just to give you some context.
Thank you, Don.
Another clarification, again, for Gary. The car wash, the south side of that car wash structure is right at a hundred feet from the nearest house. So if I'm measuring, again, that back wall to the wall of the nearest house, it's about ninety-five feet. That's the closest residential structure. Again, just to give you some context.
Correct, I went over and measured, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Coming, staying with the theme of noise levels, and this, again, is for staff. How, what's, Patsy, and I don't know if this goes to you or not, but what's the average decibel reading of Highway seventy-eight during commute hours? You know, how does that compare to that car wash?
Commissioner...
Do we have numbers on that?
Commissioner Looney, I don't have information on that. And so I cannot answer your question at this time.
Okay.
If I could just jump in, this is John Hamilton again, the environmental planner for the city. I would think that Joanne Dramco may have that information that may have been part of the background analysis. It may have included that. It may not be a direct reading of the highway noise, but if we could ask Lisa Gordon to see if Joanne's available for that question, that might answer it.
Okay.
Thank you, John. I'd be happy to pass that question on to Joanne. Joanne, can you opine on that?
Sure. We did take noise measurements at the site, under existing conditions. So we took noise measurements along Vista Village Drive that were, it was about seventy-two decibels. And then another measurement on Hacienda Drive that was sixty-one decibels. And again, this is not a twenty-four-hour measurement. It was a short-term measurement. But those are, represent the existing conditions. And we did model future conditions for traffic noise. But again, the project itself would provide some attenuation from the traffic noise. The existing condition is totally flat. And then when the project is built, there'll be buildings there that will provide a little bit of attenuation from the freeway noise.
Correct, okay. Okay, thank you for that. Again, for staff. Patsy, will the existing Panera restaurant be, will that remain open?
This is a question for the applicant, for Lisa Gordon, to better address that, if she has had communications with the proposed Panera. And I'll turn that over to Lisa Gordon. Lisa?
Okay.
Thank you, Patsy. Yeah, the existing Panera restaurant is a business plan that's not privy to us. It's not part of the project. So I wouldn't be able to give you any information on the future of that business plan for any project or any storefront that's not on our project. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Okay. Okay. And then the last point that I have is concerning the greenhouse emissions. Those were somewhat high, Patsy, that was given in your report. But taking into consideration the few number of buildings that we have on this parcel, there would have to be a significant reduction of car counts before those could be reduced. So is that a critical piece of information that we need to be looking closer at?
As far as the potential of reduction in terms of the particular trips and the greenhouse gases? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, is it unusual? Are those counts unusual for a development as such?
Well, whenever you have the amount of trips generated with the particular uses, that will result in the numbers that are presented here because of the amount of the, the number of the drive-throughs that are associated with the project. So I guess it's, it comes with the particular proposed project and the features of it. Certainly, there are, in the EIR, there were identified particulars about alternatives and reduced project with less footprint or the types of uses that are being proposed as far as the drive-through. So those were presented in there, however rejected. And as you probably read through the documents, it talks about the particular objectives and how they were not being all, being able to be met. So, but there are reduced footprints or consideration for that was part of the analysis.
Okay, thank you. And Chairman, that's all the questions that I have.
Very good, thank you, Don. Commissioner Aguilar, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Just a couple. My first question, just to confirm this. The Madigwall is not gonna be opened up, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, 'cause I know we've made, we made promises to those residents that that's, that would never open up. So I wanna make sure that's intact. And then my other question is, has it ever been looked at to swap pad five with three and four?
So basically, where the car wash is located with the two pads behind it, and whether there was a consideration of that swap? That is your question?
Right.
We, in prior conversations, because this project has been in the pipe for a while, there were questions from staff about, you know, the car wash having to be at this particular location. And I can, I, it probably would be a better question for the applicant. I'll turn it over to Lisa Gordon so they can explain the rationale behind why it is located where it's located. So Lisa, turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Patsy. So if I understand the question, Commissioner, I believe you're asking if the car wash would be better situated against the freeway and then bring the two pads, three and four, outside of the project against Hacienda?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So Dan Feldman is here and would like to go ahead and field that question for you.
Yes, Commissioner, there's a couple of reasons for that. Mostly, what we wanted to do was get the traffic off of the neighborhood road and bring it as far into the center. So if there was any queuing that was necessary, we'd keep that on our center. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that if there was any form of drive-through or pickup or any of those things, it would be as far away from the, from the street again. And then the third one is, as you can see, those, the two buildings that are separate, that are close to the freeway and the on-ramp and off-ramp, they have better visibility. And for them, it's important to be able to mark it that way to the neighborhood as people are coming on and off of the freeway so that people know exactly where those two are located. Then finally, when you look at the actual physical dimension of the site, it doesn't quite lay out to have those two pads right on the street. And so they would just be too close together and it would be too pinched of a site that wouldn't allow for that use. The one thing that I do wanna make sure that we express, and I know that there's been a lot of questions with respect to the traffic and the noise, is that in the three years since we've been processing this, we've spent a lot of time with the city and the city's staff and the technical support in order to be very diligent and make sure that we complied with the code and the rules that are put forth by the city of Vista. So none of these decisions were made lighthearted or without careful consideration or without study.
Commissioner Aguilar, any other questions?
No, you know, the questions that I have were answered by the applicant. Mostly, the tax revenue to the city, which is about a hundred fifty-six thousand, and the jobs that were gonna be provided as well. So I'm comfortable, thank you.
Okay, very good. I have just a few questions. Patsy, I think this is best for John Hamilton. John, could you review our role tonight in certifying the EIR? What are, what are we saying tonight?
Commissioner Rassler, if you could just repeat your question, please?
What's our role in certifying the EIR tonight? What are, what are we doing? What are we saying about, about the EIR?
Well, basically, as I understand it, you are certifying the EIR as being compliant with CEQA. And in addition, you are also certify, or adopting the findings of fact and also the overriding considerations. So the, and so the EIR is composed of three volumes, which is the draft EIR, which has been revised to include some minor changes that were in the draft and also changes that were promulgated by the recirculated draft, which was a partial EIR, partially recirculated draft. And then volume two is the appendices. And then volume three is what's called, that is also called the final EIR, but that's essentially looking and adopting and certifying that in terms, that was really concerned, comments and response to comments. That's the main, the main part of that.
Okay, thank you. Patsy?
Yes.
We have the existing superstar car wash that was just approved, was just built up on East Vista Way and Williamson?
Correct.
Subsequent to its opening, there's a chain link fence with partitions installed in front of the, in front of the car wash? Could you tell me why that was?
Right. There were concerns that were raised after they started operating the particular car wash that you just mentioned, Chairman Rassler, and from neighbors up above, that the sound, obviously, traveling up were concerned and raised their concerns. So they had to, basically, the city asked the operator to look at that or revisit that, the issue with noise. And what you see out there, or what the improvement was done, was to try to address the concern as far as the noise, the propagation of the noise coming out from the tunnel.
Very good. Okay, thank, thank you. And then further on the noise, on the noise level, the fifty dBEL that the LEQ, that's an average, is it not?
That's correct. That's my understanding, but Joanne Dramco can correct me if I'm wrong.
Joanne?
Yes, that is an average. That's a one-hour average of the noise level.
Okay, it's a one-hour average.
That's correct.
All right. And then for the, the project manager, I have significant heartburn over the design of the back of the building on pad one. I'm finding it nothing more than a rectangular box with awnings on it. The other buildings are superior. They do have penetration, they have movement in the roofline, they have change in materials, they have change in color. And I'm, I am just, I'm frankly disappointed that that's the first thing you're gonna see as you approach this, this project and the fact that it turns its back on the city. Everything is focused internal to your, to your shopping center. So I wanna, I'd like to ask you about the design considerations that went into the building on pad one.
So this question is for Lisa Gordon. If you'd like to bring SGPA or the architect online, Fernando's available to help answer that question. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Patsy. We have Keith Pittsburgh on the line with SGPA, and he can talk a little bit about that, that elevation. Keith, are you on mute? Keith, are you on mute? Patsy, maybe we can come back to Keith. Let me see if he's lost his connection.
Sure. And I think Fernando might have been on the line prior, but I'm not sure if he left or maybe he's not, no longer participating. So we can move on to the next question. Chairman Rossler, while we're trying to get the architect on the line.
All right. For the traffic engineer, John, there were comments that the cities received or the commissions received from the neighborhood concerning people cutting through from Hacienda, the Vale View, the, I think it's Crest View. Did you see that at all in, in, when you're out there looking at the site?
Yeah, we don't see many people go, being oriented to and from that way. That's not what our models were showing. That being said, we still thought it was a good idea and talked with the city a lot about prohibiting that left turn out of the east driveway. So not much demand in the first place, but that'll really discourage people from going that way and trying to wind through the neighborhoods.
Okay. Is there any existing trips that go that way? That, that people go from, from, say, the food for less and cut through to Crest View and get on the freeway at, at Civic Center?
We can't tell. We, we do traffic counts out there, but we don't track them all the way through there. So I'm, I'm sure a little bit of that happens, but the volumes are small on Hacienda, that's for sure. So there can't be a whole lot doing it. But I'm sure there's a handful that do that, yes.
Okay, very good. All right. How we, my architectural question?
Yeah, this is Keith. I'm, I'm on the line. Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting my phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Yeah, hi Commissioners and Chairman Rossler.
You have any questions?
Yes, I, I did. And this particular design is a branded design for the, I'm sorry, I have background noise. A branded design for Chick-fil-A. And we were attempting to help them with their branded design. I think that it may look more simple in illustration than it looks in real life. There is a new Chick-fil-A over at, in the city of Escondido that has a similar design and it's, it's very modern looking and it has muted colors. So I think that is what they're trying to achieve and part of their branding is, and extends to their building design and their signage. So that is something that we were trying to work with them on. The rest of the buildings we designed and this is specific to that tenant.
Okay. All right. That concludes my questions on the project. The next portion of this hearing is to open the public hearing. And Patsy, we have discussed 10 minutes. Is 10 minutes still appropriate for the public comment time?
Yes, Chairman Rossler, 10 minutes would be appropriate and we can go into that right now if you'd like to.
Okay. I have 7:33. We will take a 10-minute break for people to either email comments at planningcomments@cityofvista.com or to voicemail at 760-643-2816. And we will be back at 7:43.
Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
I don't know if this is out of protocol or not, but I looked up the, this Chick-fil-A in Escondido for the exterior drawing or exterior building type.
Yep.
And if they follow that prototype, it, it doesn't match anything on the drawing. But it does match the other building that we have, the concept drawing for the exterior elevation.
Okay.
Has the same gray tones, it's got cannibal group elements, it's got some walls. Actually, it's, it's quite nice looking, but it doesn't match anything that we see on our drawings.
Okay.
So if, if that's their prototype that is going to be proposed on this property, then it's, it's a lot better looking than what.
Chairman, this is John Aguilar. I also looked it up and it doesn't look the same. It's, it looks, looks pretty good.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Well, we should probably hold this conversation until we have our commission discussion time. But that's good to know. Thank you, both John and John.
Chairman Rossler? Chairman Rossler, this is Patsy again. Since there was this conversation going, I think we probably need to add time or start again as far as the 10 minutes for the break, for the public comment, please.
Okay. All right. I now have 7:35. We will reconvene at 7:45.
Thank you.
Starbucks Coffee Company is excited to be a part of the new Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. And we ask for your support for the special use permit for this valuable addition to the community. Our mission is to inspire and nurture the human spirit, one person, one cup, and one neighborhood at a time. That mission is at the forefront of everything we do at Starbucks. The Starbucks, excuse me. The Starbucks store will quickly become a community meeting place with its proximity to the Vista Courthouse. It will provide an uplifting space for law enforcement and first responders who frequent the area. It will also provide a meeting place for families of the Vista community. The drive-through feature at this location will bring a new level of convenience for busy parents, morning and afternoon commuters, and patrons who prefer this experience. The pad design and orientation of the drive-through provides ample queuing space, ensuring a smooth flow from order point to pickup point. Drive-through is complemented by our mobile order and pay option, which allows customers to order ahead and pick up at their convenience. The use of this option in drive-throughs has grown every year since its inception. The result is an efficient balance among our café customers, drive-through queue, and mobile order customers. This Starbucks store will employ approximately 25 to 30 people with some of the best jobs in the industry. We believe success is best when it is shared. And we try very hard to exceed the expectations of our employees, or as we call them, partners. Benefits include health insurance for both full-time and part-time partners. We offer a 401K matchup to 6%. Free access to mental health resources, backup childcare support, and free college tuition at Arizona State University's online program. We also believe in directly supporting our community with community service, partnerships, and donations. Our food share program supports Feeding San Diego by donating nourishing, ready-to-eat meals to food banks around the county. Our neighborhood stores have also supported local schools, YMCA's, Solutions for Change, Showers of Blessings, and other organizations serving the local community. We are confident that the Starbucks store will thrive and meet the needs of the neighborhood. We urge you to support the special use permit for the Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. Signed, Cynthia Frios. The next letter comes from Reza Amirrezavany from Superstar Car Wash. And he has a correction, which I'll read it into the record as part of his letter. It starts, Dear Planning Commissioners, Superstar Car Wash Express has been in the car wash business since 1993, serving the San Diego region for four years. In North County, we own and operate car washes in Oceanside, Escondido, and in Vista on East Vista Way, north of Vale Terrace Drive. Touchless car washes have grown in popularity over the last 10 years, and demand only continues to grow, especially during the coronavirus pandemic as people move away from invasive car washes. That is why we are looking forward to meeting customers where they are with their newest car wash at the Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. The express model we offer is a winning combination of convenience, cost-effectiveness, and cleanliness. Unlike the traditional full-service model where a customer must interact with staff and wait 30 to 45 minutes, the express model allows customers to zip in and zip out. They do not have to roll down their window or open their wallet because sensors recognize their vehicle and automatically begin the car wash. For added convenience and value, the monthly subscription model provides customers with an unlimited number of washes for a fixed fee. Environmental protection is a core part of our operation. Approximately 75% of the water used in each wash is recycled through oil and sand interceptors. Fresh water is only used for the final rins. Our operation is very water-efficient compared to at-home washes, which use 150 to 250 gallons per car. By contrast, our system uses 15 to 17 gallons per car. It was a correction that was made from a prior statement from Reza Amirrezavany that was mentioned 25 to 30 gallons. So it was corrected later to say 15 to 17 gallons per car. The letter continues, While some may question whether a new car wash can survive, there is no doubt in our mind that the community will embrace a Superstar Car Wash Express at this location. We are investing a significant amount of money to build this car wash from the ground up. And we are doing so because we have seen the surging demand at our other locations. We believe this will be a very successful enterprise. We look forward to providing this new convenient service for the community. And we urge you to support Sun Road Special Use Permit Application. Signed, Reza Amirrezavany. The next letter is from Richard Elway, representing Mano Development Group Panera Bread. The letter reads, Dear Planning Commissioners, 30 years ago, at a time when quick service meant low quality, Panera Bread set out to challenge expectations. We believed that food that was good and that you could feel good about, served in a warm and welcoming environment by people who cared, could bring out the best in all of us. So we began with a simple commitment to bake bread fresh every day in our bakery cafes. No shortcuts, just bakers with simple ingredients and hot ovens. Each night, any unsold bread and baked goods were shared with neighbors in need. These traditions carry on today, and we look forward to continuing the tradition with our newest Panera Bread Bakery Cafe at the Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. This center's proximity to the freeway makes this an excellent choice for Panera Bread and our guests. The drive-through feature will enable us to provide a new, easier way for our guests to enjoy their favorites. What makes this center particularly appealing is the synergy of Panera, Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, and the car wash, and more. In centers like this, the tenants generate business for each other by providing a convenient variety of choices for customers. Families who all have their own preferences find this variety especially attractive. We have had great success in similar centers and expect Sun Road Plaza to be no different. Our Panera Bread Bakery Cafes are passionate about supporting the communities we serve. At the end of every day, we bundle our leftover food and give it to local charities. We host fundraiser nights where we donate 20% of sales to nonprofit organizations ranging from church groups to sports teams. Our shared adult charity supports underprivileged children and provides emergency assistance to our employees. This is a well-designed commercial center. We urge you to support the special use permit application. Signed, Richard Elway. The next letter comes from Julian Shado. It reads, Dear members of the planning commission, my name is Julian Shado. My family owned the property at 460 Hacienda Drive until a few years ago, when we sold it to Sun Road. My family still owns the largest neighboring residential parcel, which is across the street from the Sun Road property on Madigual Road. Both properties are 100% freeway frontage. I support Sun Road's application for special use permit, and I hope you will too. I am part of the fourth generation of a small-time Vista family. This land has been in my family for many years, long before Vista Village Drive crossed over the freeway, long before the Food for Less Shopping Center was built. I still live and work locally. My children attend Vista Public Schools. My wife is a nurse at a local school. We have deep roots in the community. We have seen a lot of change in this area over my lifetime. For decades, we struggled to find a buyer who could transform 460 Hacienda into something that would truly be the highest and best use. When Sun Road approached, we were convinced that their long history of successful commercial development in San Diego would deliver the right kind of project here. The commercial center they have put together has not let us down, and we believe it will provide a great value to the community. I urge you to vote in support of this application. Thank you for your careful consideration. Signed, Julian Shado. The next one is from Alita Dirdo. And the message is regarding Sun Road Plaza Commercial Project. And it reads, I would like to encourage the planning commission to pay special attention to the traffic flow of the entrances/exits for this project. As a resident of the neighborhood, I am concerned that if an entrance/exit directs traffic too close to the Hacienda and Vale View intersection, there will be additional traffic on Vale View because people may be tempted to use it as a cut-through. Vale View is a winding residential road with many blind curves and no sidewalks or streetlights. Many residents walk it daily with their pets and families. Increased traffic would contribute to the danger for pedestrians. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, Alita Dirdo. And for now, Mr. Michael Rosler, principal planner, he'll be reading the next comments that we've received. Michael?
Next letter was received from David Greenspan. Thank you for addressing my comments regarding the Sun Road project. I raised several issues last November that were not addressed by the respondents.
Yeah, see, Michael's not coming through.
It's too far. Hold on for a second. He's gonna move a little closer so he can go into the speaker. Just give us one second here.
Chairman Rosler, can you hear me now?
Loud and clear. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. The first letter that I have is received from David Greenspan. It reads, Thank you for addressing my comments regarding the Sun Road project. I raised several issues last November that were not addressed by the respondents. And I found that this to be the case with Sun Road's response to several other letters as well. Here are the four issues where Caltrans, Sun Road, and the traffic study seem to respond with answers that have nothing to do with the questions or provide misleading responses. Bottom line, my questions were not addressed or answered satisfactorily. That means nothing, and neither were yours. And yet you are ready to approve. How is this possible? Number one, I cited the traffic delays at the intersection of Vista Village Drive and Hacienda at the Food for Less intersection. There will be 10,000 cars moving through this intersection each day, according to the EIR report. And yet, no one responded to this question. There are cars backing up and blocking this intersection every day from 3:00 to 7:00, and yet, no one is even acknowledging this reality. Caltrans' response was only about traffic on the 78. Sun Road's response was about the intersection at Melrose and Hacienda. And the consulting firm's traffic study was about the 78 entrance. All three sidesteps speaking about the intersection that will be directly impacted. This is the intersection where increased traffic and pollution will be concentrated and violates Vista's cap. How can we proceed without the parties involved answering this core question? How can the planning commission be oblivious to this fact? Number two, I commented that Vale View Drive will end up being a shortcut back to Melrose Drive because no one will want to wait behind thousands of more cars and two lights after getting their fast food. So they'll head the other way and find their first right turn is Sleepy Vale View Drive. And even though the entrance to my residential street is less than 300 feet from the proposed project, the response was that neither Caltrans, Sun Road, or the independent consulting firm had assessed this possibility. How can you proceed if you are not even acknowledging that you are placing 10,000 cars at the entrance to a quiet, no sidewalk, 25 mile an hour street? Who is doing the research and planning here? Sun Road or the elected officials? I do not feel represented here. I feel steamrolled and ignored. How is it possible for me to comply with the city, the Vista City Council's request for comments, and then to have my comments and questions ignored by the planning board, the developer, and by government agencies that are meant to represent me? Whenever a letter referenced garbage refuge, which is an obvious reality of a daily operation of fast food restaurants and car washes, the official response to these very real questions ignored the reality of lines of idling cars, of five drive-throughs, and their emissions obviously violating the cap, and instead constantly changing the subject and replied with the following false narratives. Char broilers do not pollute the air. Ha. No one commented about char broilers. The issue is 10,000 cars a day, which violates our cap. Delivery trucks won't idle because they will rush in and out. What? No one commented about delivery trucks. The issue is 10,000 cars a day, which violates our cap. And finally, that if I'm worried about littering diners, I should contact code enforcement after fast food diners have thrown garbage out of their windows. Really? There are raising cane wrappers all over our streets right now, and we are a mile away from raising canes. Where's that studied in the EIR? There are preposterous responses. We are talking about pushing a number of cars equal to 10% of the entire population of Vista through this tiny, one-lane, heavy-traffic intersection on a daily basis. And yet, all the official responses are about traffic on the 78, Melrose, delivery trucks, char broilers. There is no way to mitigate the damage this level of pollution and congestion will create today and in the future. Number four, and finally, Sun Road's response to the request to clarify the design of the buildings was unacceptable. Sun Road actually had the goal to say that whatever the design ends up being, it will be an improvement on a dirt lot. Yes, this was their official response. I guess if staring at fast food signs is better than nothing, that would be the case. But they revealed that they don't care about the look and feel of the project as long as they can build this mausoleum. That is the height of condensation considering you are placing a Las Vegas-style strip mall in the middle of an already congested intersection, offering something of no value to those of us who live here, and sadly, made me realize that the fix might already be in. I will have to drive past this blight every day, as well as anyone visiting me. But the developer will get to choose how it looks. Will there be signs facing the 78 trying to entice transient drivers? Will there be signs further west on the 78 announcing drive-throughs? Will this be a rest stop on the way to Escondido? We certainly don't have the population in Vista to fill these businesses. So transient drivers on the 78 must be lured to the site who will address the obvious pollution from 10,000 cars after you approve the project. Who will be accountable after you green-light this eyesore? If you approve this developer moving forward with this project, even though they will exceed the city's cap, then something is seriously amiss. David Greenspan, resident and owner of Vista-based business for over five years. The next letter was received from David Clark, M.D. Dear council members, as a resident of the neighborhood of Vista for 41 years, I live near the proposed Sun Road project. I think the project will create horrible traffic problems for this intersection and for traffic traversing my neighborhood. It will lead to more trash in our neighborhood, more transients, more discarded shopping carts, more crime, and a lower quality of life. We do not need these fast food stores and car washes, especially with the extended economic impact that COVID-19 will cause. There will be many empty commercial units that will result from all the failed businesses soon to come. Ask yourself just how many empty businesses Vista needs right now. Please find the strength to stand up to commercial developers who do not care about the negative effects on the surrounding neighborhood. Think about the citizens you serve. Thank you, David Clark, M.D. David Clark is at the address of 584 Vale View Drive. The next letter was received by the San Diego Regional Chamber. Dear Mayor Ritter, members of the city council, on behalf of the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, I am pleased to offer this letter to support for Sun Road Vista Land Partners, a subsidiary of Chamber members Sun Road Enterprises. As a 40-year member of the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, Sun Road has established track record as a business leader in San Diego County. Since its founding in San Diego in 1977, Sun Road has established itself as one of the leading San Diego-based businesses in the region. Sun Road's Real Estate Group has successfully Sun Road's real estate group has successfully completed dozens of commercial projects throughout San Diego County, as well as apartment homes and resort properties. Sun Road's Automotive Group is a leader in the automotive industry with nine San Diego dealerships, including 11 brands. The company's executive leadership also has a wide-range commitment to community philanthropy, as demonstrated by Sun Road's founder, Aaron Feldman's, substantial contribution to local schools, libraries, hospitals, and social service organizations. Mr. Feldman's commitment to the community was perhaps most famously demonstrated by the sponsorship of a new helicopter for the City of San Diego's Fire Rescue Department following the devastating 2003 wildfires. Our chamber, consisting of 2,500 member businesses and almost 300,000 jobs across the region, is committed to making San Diego the best place to work and live. In today's challenging economic times, we believe it's all the more critical to advance projects such as this to ensure future generations are able to benefit from the expertise, civic leadership, and professionalism of companies like Sun Road. As you consider whether to approve the Sun Road commercial development project, please consider Sun Road's long record of successful community development and philanthropy in our region. We are proud to count Sun Road as a member of the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce and believe you will be proud to welcome Sun Road as a part of the Vista community as well. Sincerely, Jerry Sanders, President and CEO of San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce. The next letter received was from Diana Zab, addressed as 839 Bellevue Drive. Since purchasing our home on Bellevue Drive 29 years, we have seen sufficient changes in our city. Like most of our neighbors, we understand that times do not stand still and change is inevitable. As we have watched our area grow over time, we have experienced an increase in traffic on our street. That change was most dramatic with the completion of the high-density apartment units on Melrose Drive and Breeze Hill. Bellevue has become a convenient pass-through for commuters. Many drivers distracted and/or traveling on a very unsafe speed, wishing to avoid the ever-present backup at Melrose and Hacienda intersection. Our narrow road with tight curves, hidden driveways, steep hills, and no sidewalks was never intended to carry the tremendous volume of traffic that normally exists. It seems as if the project planners are assuming that the traffic generated by the Sun Road Plaza project will, for the most part, be using the Vista Village off-ramp. However, with the placement of one of the driveways at the east end of the project, I believe many travelers will find Hacienda and Bellevue Drive to be a shortcut around the congestion that already impacts the Melrose-Vista Village area. The traffic added to our residential street will most certainly be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the vicinity. Please keep the well-being of our neighborhood in mind when considering the size and scope of this project. Be safe and well. Thank you. Diana Zeb. The next correspondence was a voicemail from Tom Zeb. The proposed project will generate too many vehicular trips. I want to be on record in opposition of this project. The next letter was received from Lana Laghart. Briefly, I am opposed to the current Sun Road project. The environmental impact report failed to study traffic impact through the neighborhood in which I live, and this is an unacceptable oversight for me and for my neighbors. Please do not approve any project on this site that will increase traffic so significantly. Thank you, Lana Laghart. The next letter is from Stephanie Jackal. Speaking for South Vista Communities, I hope you will seriously consider the reduced footprint alternative for this project. This alternative would remove the car wash from the project. There is a car wash .3 of a mile away, and this one is superfluous. The reduced footprint alternative will also bring the HGH down to a level of less-than-significant impact levels. This alternative would allow the remainder of the project to go forward. Sincerely, Stephanie Jackal, South Vista Communities. And the last email we received was a duplicate from Lana Laghart, and that was the last correspondence that we received, Commissioner Rosler.
So that concludes the public input for the public hearing?
That is correct. These are the comments that we received, Chairman Rosler.
All right.
I'm sorry, Chairman. Chairman Rosler, I'm sorry. Can I add a notation? There were prior comments that we received that were not asked to be read into the record, but I had forwarded those to the commission earlier this afternoon before the meeting. So I just wanted to put that in the record. Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
I've read all the correspondence that we received. So the public hearing is now closed, and we'll open it up to Commissioner discussion. And let me start off by saying that when I first opened the packet, I thought that this was an appropriate location for the use, adjacent to the freeway, adjacent to a non-ramp. But after reading the environmental impact report, I come to the conclusion that it's just too intense for the site. It will exceed our greenhouse gas standards, where the city is committed to reducing the level of emissions. I agree with former Commissioner Jackal in that the project alternatives analyzed in the EIR, the reduced footprint alternative is the environmentally superior project. And it would reduce, it would result in the reduction of CO emissions below the greenhouse gas screening level. It does meet all of the city's鲁西objectives, except for the applicant's desire for four drive-throughs and car wash. It only produces 770 metric tons of carbon dioxide, and the city's screening level is 1,180 metric tons, 35% entry. For me, there's a tipping point here, where the project could generate 1185 metric tons, and I am not sure that overriding considerations be adopted and meet the bright line. I suppose the special use permit for the drive-throughs have sufficient stacking, but I would like to see Chick-fil-A standards, because I know what happens at that drive-through. I cannot support the current layout of the project. Due to the lax design on Pad 1 building, it turns its back on the community and is a rectangular box. Pad 1 and Pad 2 need to be split, and Pad 2 building oriented to Hacienda. Pad 1 needs to comply with all the design guidelines and be adjacent to the freeway. The same goes for the car wash and Pad 3 and 4, as Commissioner Aguilar suggested. I just won't support a car wash across the street from single-family homes. The concrete wall that everybody was talking about is on the single-family homes and not under the control of Sun Road. So I just think it's a bad idea. So I won't support the project, and I'm struggling to know what to do with the EIR. My initial reaction was not to approve it tonight, but because of the statement of overriding considerations, I've seen it. I'm struggling with that. I think the project could come back, it would generate the 1185 metric tons, and a redesign that exchanges the buildings that I've talked about. And I think the building should be oriented to street. I know early design review is specifically designed for residential projects, but if we can, I would offer that up to Sun Road, so if they came back to early design review, they'd get our input and know they have a solid bidding to approve it. So that's where I'm at. So anyway.
Chairman Rosler, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kramer, any comment?
Chairman Rosler, this is Patsy again. We received a voicemail, actually, that we would, if we could take this, just one, this one second, to read into the record, please.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Sure. We actually received two voicemails, one from David Greenspan, indicating that Mr. Greenspan opposes the project based on greenhouse gases and traffic. We also received a voicemail from Roseanne Drucker. She also objects to the project based on noise and traffic.
And that concludes the voicemails that we received. Thank you, Chairman Rosler.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Kramer, do you have any comment?
Yes, I do. I have a couple of comments. I, thank goodness, that former Commissioner Jackal spoke up about the car wash that is a third of a mile away. I had completely forgotten about that one. Personally, I like the concept of what is trying to happen with this lot, because I do think it's the right mix of businesses. However, the car wash doesn't fit. So before, I was concerned, you know, with the hours of operation, but again, with one being so close, even though the one that's on the corner of Melrose and Hacienda is not a full-service or not a, not do-it-yourself, but it's not like the one that's proposed. It is another car wash, so it is real close. So I think, Mr. Chairman, that I support your thoughts and your actions about the greenhouse, and I think maybe we should rethink this. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings?
I agree with both the former commissioners' previous comments. I'm very concerned about the greenhouse gases. I don't feel that the statements of overriding concern really address the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are going to be generated there. I don't like the overall design, as I said earlier. I think it's too many drive-throughs. I'm not sure why we would want that much commercial busyness right there. And I do have similar concerns about the traffic. So I can't support this the way it is right now.
Very good. Commissioner Grimm? Charlie?
Am I coming through now?
There you are.
Can you hear me, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. With regard to the greenhouse gases, I'm not sure that you can have a four-acre project that's a commercial project where you don't affect greenhouse gases. And that might be a question for Mr. Hamilton, but I think most of the major projects, if you want to have a major project, I think you're gonna, you know, maybe have to deal with that. With regard to the car wash, I agree that that may not be the best location for the car wash. I agree with Commissioner Rosler on the backside of Pad 1. I think more could be done there. I realize that's the company brand, but I think, you know, it could be enhanced somewhat. I do have difficulty with a number of driveways. However, I think if you look at the plot plan, the major concern would be at the west end where you have both Starbucks and Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A already does a pretty good job of managing their parking situation, or their, excuse me, their queuing situation. They have staff, you know, that come out and take orders. I haven't seen Starbucks do that, and maybe a way to help the situation here is that we put a condition on it, if we choose to approve it, put a condition on it that would indicate that the director of planning would have the ability, if he felt that queuing was exceeded on a regular basis. In other words, queuing out of the protected area that each business has. If it was exceeded, then he may require that they do add a staff member to work the orders in the driveway during those particular hours. That might be a possibility. And finally, just going back to the architecture a little bit, I'm not going to fight the applicant on this, but I'm just, as the commission knows, not real big about corrugated metal on buildings, on newer buildings, because we have so much of it. So those are my concerns. I would be happy to entertain a motion, too, that would, or agree to a motion to continue to see if we can work out some of the issues. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Garrettson, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I cannot support this either. And, you know, for the reasons you talked about, the greenhouse gas, the overriding conditions don't seem to support that. And I think that what the mitigation about the intersection of Hacienda and Vista Village Drive and 78 is not sufficient. I think this project as it is would create just a nightmare there, because you've got traffic coming, three lanes one way, three lanes the other way, and each one of those lanes want to go left, straight, and right. And I think unless we have some sort of synchronization with those lights up there by 78, it's just gonna create nothing but a nightmare there. So I will be opposed to this project as proposed.
Very well. Commissioner Looney, comment?
Just a couple. It really is a drive-through center. We've got five buildings, and they're all drive-throughs. The car wash area, that footprint of the stacking cars coming in, the vacuum centers, it takes up probably between 20% and 25% of the surface area of that lot for one building. So I think that's a little excessive. As far as the architecture, I think the architecture is good, except for building number one. And if Chick-fil-A uses the architecture that's presented in the Escondido store, I think that's going to be compatible with the other architecture. One of the, kind of a minor things that I don't think, it might be minor, but we've got all these drive-throughs, and we've got minimal trash receptacle areas for the dumpsters. And it has been brought up in a couple of the letters from residences about the trash that has been generated from adjacent properties. We just want to make sure that there is adequate trash bins adjacent to each building that is finally proposed in the, maybe revised site plan. And that's all that I have.
Very good. Commissioner Aguilar?
Yeah, I would support a motion to continue this. I think the car wash is probably the major problem here. I think that needs to be reworked or taken out. Somehow, that needs to be addressed. I think it is too close to those homes, and I think it's gonna create an issue. But as far as the drive-throughs, I'd like to mention something about that. But as far as the drive-throughs, I'd like to mention something about that. Everything indicates in business that people are moving to drive-throughs. People do not want to go into restaurants, and I think if we take a look at our world today, it's only going to be worse as far as that goes, because I think people are going to be, people are driving through right now because of the COVID. But before all of this world-changing dynamics that we have going on right now, people were gravitating towards businesses that had a drive-through. And I went through this when I was on council, when Canes wanted to come into town. I didn't like the idea of drive-through there. I thought that was going to be a problem. It seems out it's not. They manage their traffic very well, and people go to Canes because they've got kids, they don't want, they're coming home from work, they don't want to go to the grocery store or what have you, they don't have time, so they're driving through and bringing dinner home. So, I think the future is drive-throughs. Vista has always kind of been opposed to drive-throughs over the years, but I think we need to loosen that up. As far as the architecture goes, I think, I think that's going to get worked out, but that's something that could be addressed, but I think that's going to be fine. But I think really the main issue is the car wash. There needs to be a solution to that. And if we're ready to make a motion, I'm willing to make the motion with continuance.
Chairman Rossler? This is Patsy Chow.
Yep.
I think we probably should ask the applicant, as far as just the motion, the idea of the motion, as far as the continuance, in terms of their opinions on that and their scheduling. I know they have quite tight schedules at their end that they have shared with me in the past as processing this project, so I think it would probably be a good idea to get their input on this and what they're thinking is, as to what is being said so far. So, Lisa Norton from Sun Road?
Thank you, Patsy. This is Lisa from Sun Road. I just want to say that we've worked very hard on this project. We've spent over three years developing something that we feel strongly is the best use for this community-serving project, and we would, we don't want to continue, so we would not support that motion. We would ask that the Planning Commissioners put a motion to approve on the table and take the vote.
Well, I don't, I didn't hear anyone that was willing to do that. I have a question for Mr. Hamilton concerning certifying the EIR. Does that need to be done tonight, and can we separate out the statement of overriding considerations, or do we need to send the entire project and documents back?
Mr. Chairman, this is John Conley, Deputy City Attorney. If you're going to take action to potentially deny the project, then I would recommend that you do not take any action on the secret document or the statement of overriding considerations. That would not be necessary if the commission intends to move for denial. The other thing to consider is if there is a denial being considered, you should look at the special use permit resolution, which is Exhibit 2 in your packet. The findings on pages 1757 to 1759 of your packet should be referenced, and one of those findings should be made by a commissioner who's going to make a motion if, in fact, a denial is being pursued.
Deputy City Attorney Amanda Guy, I just want to add additional comment to John. So, what he was referencing is currently those findings in that resolution are drafted to include the substantial evidence to support making those findings. So, if you were to move to deny, you need to provide substantial evidence for one or more of these findings that were changed to not support making the findings.
Okay. Amanda, which page was the findings on again of the staff report?
Chairman Rossler, this is Patsy. Are you asking for the, so that we can mention what the findings are and what page they can be found? Is that your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the Planning Commission Resolution.
It's on page 23. Actually, on page 23 of 124, it's the resolution pertaining to the special use permit and the site development plan. If you look at specifically pages, starting on page 24 of 124 in the staff report, it will identify under Item 2B, where the Planning Commission makes the following findings with regard to the special use permit, and there are six specific findings under the special use permit. And what Ms. Amanda Guy is referring to is that you must make reference to at least a couple of these findings, if I understood correctly, as to your basis for denial, that you cannot make these findings.
On Finding 2, the proposed use and the manner to be conducted is permitted in a applicable zone will conform to applicable state, federal, state, local laws or regulations.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read through the findings that are required for the special use permit?
Yes, please.
Okay. First finding is, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any specific plan. The second finding is, the proposed use and the manner to be conducted is permitted in the applicable zone and will conform to the applicable federal, state, and local laws or regulations. The third finding is, the site for the proposed use has a size that is sufficient to reasonably accommodate the planned activities and will be served by existing infrastructure and utilities sufficient to serve the neighborhood inclusive of the proposed use or has been conditioned to install such infrastructure and utilities. The fourth finding is, the design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the proposed use will be compatible with the existing and planned land uses in the vicinity. The fifth finding is, the proposed use at its location will provide the neighborhood with a service or facility that will contribute to its general welfare. And the final finding is, the proposed use and its operation will not be unduly detrimental to the health and safety or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, property or improvements in the vicinity, or the fiscal or economic interests of the city of Vista. If the commission would like to make a motion for denial, we would prefer that you find that the project does not comply with one of or more of these findings.
And the greenhouse gas, the greenhouse gas policies and bright line, that's all part of our general plan, correct? Is that right?
That is all a secret threshold that is per policies in our general plan, but it's not specifically included in our general plan.
I would think that we would deny the project because the greenhouse gas, bright line threshold is being exceeded. I would also say that for the general health and general welfare, that traffic on the on-ramps, going on to the on-ramps of Highway 78, backing up, is a safety issue and hasn't been, hasn't been resolved. So, greenhouse gas and traffic.
So, this is Deputy City Attorney Amanda Guy. It sounds like you would be amending the findings. So, the first finding, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plans? And then, are you looking at Finding 4 with respect to the traffic concerns, the design, location, size, and operating characteristics? Or are you looking at 5 or 6? Because those all could potentially speak to traffic.
Finding 5 talks about a service or a facility. Now, that's not. The operating characteristic.
4.
Finding 4.
Finding 4, okay.
That's sufficient?
There was also other discussion amongst the commissioners regarding the location of the car wash as part of the design. Is that something that the commission wants to include as part of your findings for denial?
At its particular location, I think there's the opportunity, if I understood the general discussion, that if it was relocated away from the single-family neighborhood and adjacent to the freeway, that that might be acceptable. So, do any of the other commissioners have an opinion on that?
I would agree with that. Commissioner Aguilar?
Okay, so the facility at the particular location is, has an impact on the neighborhood and could be redesigned, I guess.
Chairman Rossler, this is Patsy. So, the car wash, the car wash comment that you just made, you are associating that with Finding Number 5, is that correct? Or did I misunderstand?
Patsy, this is Amanda Guy. I think it would be appropriate under Finding 4.
Okay, so we got two items, the traffic and the location of the car wash under Finding Number 4, and the GHG-related bright line threshold on Finding Number 1.
And just for clarification, when we draft these, I am assuming that the current location of the car wash as designed, the impacts you're considering are noise impacts? Or are there any other impacts that we should cite, too?
I think, I think noise was the primary concern.
Can't they, it's the noise impact. Can't they move the wash itself at least to the other side of the pad? And that would, seems like that would be a simple fix.
Well, that's a decision that they're going to have to sit down and make.
Yeah, well, I'm disappointed that they're giving up. You know?
Yeah. Commissioner Rossler?
Yeah, three years of work in, and you're going to give up at this point? That's just disappointing.
Commissioner Rossler, it's Commissioner Graham. I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Aguilar. The sole reason I'm willing to join the denial is just that because of the applicant's refusal to, you know, to go back for revision. I think there's a lot of good things about the project, if it's reworked to some extent. So, that's my reason for denial. I'd like that stated in the minutes.
I would agree. And the denial is that the, that the applicant doesn't want a continuance, they would like us to approve it, we're not going to approve it, so we'll deny it, and then they can appeal to the city council. So, we have to have enough findings for the resolution of denial.
Chairman, this is John Conley. I believe the staff has the appropriate findings that we would need to draft the resolution of denial. We would just need a motion in a second.
All right.
Mr. Conley, this is Lisa from Sun Road. Can I ask a question of the commissioners?
You can ask the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm hearing that there's some disappointments that, as the applicant, we're unwilling to modify some of the site plan. And so, my question to the commissioners is, if we were able to modify the location of the car wash, would that satisfy the commissioners to allow an approval, a vote for approval of the project to go forward tonight?
I don't think it's going to happen tonight. You're going to have to redesign it and bring it back and let us look at it. But I'll ask, I'll ask the rest of the commissioners. Commissioner Kramer?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Would you support approval tonight with the condition to relocate the car wash?
No, because we don't know where it's going to be.
Exactly.
And then, if, does that have any effect if, on the greenhouse gases? Or does, if it went away, the car wash went away, does that make the greenhouse gases situation better?
I would think it would, from what my reading of the EIR.
Okay. So, no, I would not support it.
Commissioner Hastings?
No, I would not support it.
Okay. Commissioner Graham? Go ahead.
No, I would like to see the design.
Commissioner Garretson?
No, I really need to see more about the traffic, especially the impact on that intersection between Hacienda and 78.
Very good. Commissioner Looney?
I would want to see the redesign.
Okay. And Commissioner Aguilar?
I would also like to see the redesign.
All right. So, we have the findings for a resolution of denial. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. This is Commissioner Aguilar. I'll make the motion for denial.
Okay, is there a second?
Commissioner Garretson, I would second the motion.
All right, commissioners, it's been moved and seconded to deny the project.
Chairman, Chairman Rossler?
Yep.
This is Deputy City Attorney Amanda Guy. Can the maker of the motion clarify that the motion to deny is with the amended findings that we previously discussed with respect to Findings 1 and 4 for the special use permit?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make the motion that, do you want me to say the whole thing?
You can say an abridged version of what I said.
I'll make the motion of denial based on the findings of Findings 1 and 4. The proposed use is inconsistent with, no, it's consistent with the general plan, but mostly the design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the proposed use is incompatible with the existing planned use.
As we previously discussed, yeah.
As we previously discussed, yeah.
Thank you.
And I would still second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler, your vote, please.
I am voting yes to deny the project.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings? Commissioner Hastings? Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, I was muted.
Commissioner Hastings, your vote, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, I got your vote as yes, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our public hearing for this evening. The next item on our agenda is reports and comments from the Planning Commissioners. Any reports or comments?
Commissioner Looney, what's the status of the storage facility on East Vista Way?
Commissioner Looney, this is John Conley. The storage was- Commissioner Looney, this is John Conley. The storage facility on East Vista Way is currently installing their water infrastructure.
Has left the conference.
They are having some hang-ups with their retaining wall on Bad Kohlberger.
Has left the conference.
Sorry, there's a number of people leaving the conference. They have a retaining wall on East Vista Way that needs to be constructed. They had some design issues with that and permitting issues that we're still working through, but it's being held up as a result of some of their grading improvements that need to be handled before the building permit issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
John, do you want to continue with any reports or comments?
The only report I have is that we will have a meeting on June 2nd. We have a couple of items. And I don't have anything else to report unless the Commissioners have any questions or comments.
This is Commissioner Garrettson. Mr. Conley, I noticed that they're very active on that car wash on Melrose by Cannon. What is the anticipated completion of that?
Mr. Rosler, do you know the answer to that question?
I don't know the anticipated completion date. They have received a grading permit. They commenced grading activities about two weeks ago. They're in the midst of getting their building permit, and that's about all the information I have as of right now.
Yeah, thank you. In fact, it's probably about a nine to 12-month construction timeframe that we would expect.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Conley?
Just one. Commissioner Looney, again. Construction started, it looks like, maybe a couple of weeks ago on South Santa Fe near the Arco Station.
Yes, Mr. Majid Mortazavi's apartment project for 51 units.
Yes, okay. So did they resolve the sewer easement issues and also the encroachment where we had some homes that were built within the rear yard setback? Or did they get involved with that?
They did work through those issues as part of the grading permit. They are still working through one of the encroachment issues with the neighboring property, but I understand it's all being resolved amicably.
Oh, good. That's good.
Mr. Conley, I have one other question. This is Commissioner Garrettson, relative to the bike burial.
Relative to, I'm sorry?
Mr. Conley, the bike trail in terms of the status?
Yeah, the inland rail trail project, the phase up to Mar Vista Drive was recently completed. The signal at Phillips Street and Mar Vista was part of that and recently came online. The next phase of the project from Mar Vista to Civic Center has been funded and is in design. The piece from Civic Center through downtown, connecting to North Drive, is the only remaining unfunded piece of the trail. And we're, Sandags applied for some additional grant money, and we're anticipating that they'll be awarded or notified this summer of the final leg. So that's supposed to be completed in 2023 under the current schedule.
Super. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Graham. I just had a comment as well. I had a chance to drive to South Santa Fe near Partake the other day, and the improvements are starting to look really good in that area. I'd be excited to see that area in a year or two.
We are excited to have that. The Phase Two has just recently been completed. Just for the Commission's information, the final street resurfacing hasn't been done. We're waiting to do all that when Phase Three is finished. But the contractor is on schedule to finish everything before the end of this year.
Very good.
Now we just need to get those restaurants opened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
For everybody. All right. If there are no further questions or comments, we will stand at doing until June 2nd. Thank you very much, everybody. It was a long evening, but I think we made the right decisions. So, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.